Good evening, welcome to Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for April 29th, 2024. Can I have a motion to go into executive session for the matters pertaining to the employment history of a particular corporation, the employment history of particular pedagogical and non-pedagogical employees, matters made confidential under federal law FERPA, and to obtain the advice of legal counsel?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to go back into public session?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, everyone, thank you. Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for April 29th, 2024. We please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Lisa and Victoria, and then remain standing for a moment of silence for our armed forces and those in our community who have lost loved ones, especially the father of Val Balrelo, the mother-in-law of Dennis Bravoyes, the sister of Catherine Sherwood, and the grandmother of Robin Gaber. Corbin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Hatter, we have massive cuteness factor again today.
First of all, families in the audience, I just want to apologize, we were a few minutes late coming out, and I know it's been a long day already, and it's only Monday, it's been a long week. I appreciate you taking the time to be here tonight, I think we're in store, treats in store for us tonight, so I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge we were a few minutes late coming out, and certainly apologize for that, we appreciate your time and your patience. So at this point, we're excited to hear a presentation from our Brookside students using technology to enhance creativity and writing skills, so I will turn the presentation over to Principal of Brookside, Mr. Cassarini. Mr. Cassarini, welcome.
Thank you, good evening, Dr. Hatter, board members, parents, students. A few years back, you know, we kind of started off on a district-wide mission to enhance our teaching and learning of writing skills. Tonight, you're going to see a demonstration of that progress, and the way this came about, Mrs. McGarvey, who's here with her students, collaborated with Mrs. Arroyo, our instructional technology support specialist, in developing some technological approaches to enhancing writing skills. Mrs. McGarvey's going to come up now, she's going to explain, with her students, going to explain in more detail what it is that they've accomplished.
Good evening, good evening, Dr. Hatter, Mrs. Amerling, and the Board of Education. For tonight's good news, I want to share our latest completed TC unit of writing, which we were able to bring to life using an innovative tool. During this time, our reading and writing units were closely intertwined. In our reading unit, we explored and the students were exposed to all aspects of nonfiction texts. After becoming experts on nonfiction books, we began the stages of the writing process. I am so proud to hand the microphone over to my students as they tell you all about their experience.
My name is Sergio.
My name's Nathaniel.
My name's Alyssa.
My name is Verona.
My name is Daniel.
My name is Sadie.
My name is Liv.
My name is Mackenzie.
My name is Grace.
My name is Mateo.
My name is Fiona.
My name's Christiana.
My name's Victoria.
To begin with, Ms. McGarvey gave us a choice of different Arctic animals to research and write about.
We used Epic, Pebblego, and library books to make our selections on the animal we were most interested in learning about.
After selecting our animal, we began researching with our writing groups. Each day, we focused on a new research question.
These questions were, what does your animal look like, where does your animal live, what does your animal eat, and shocking or amazing facts about your animals.
Each research day, we collaborated with our writing groups and shared our facts.
After researching, we started writing the draft of our informational writing piece. We learned how to hook the reader in our introduction, write a topic sentence for each chapter, and use transition words to move from one fact to another.
Once our drafts were completed, we began the revising stage in the writing progress. We created a glossary based on important vocabulary words we found in our research, and included a table of contents.
At this point, it was time to edit our writing pieces. We worked with our peers and used editing tools, a checklist, and our word walls to correct our writing. As we approached the final stage of the writing process, Mrs. Arroyo and Mrs. McGarvey introduced us to an exciting new way to publish our work called Book Creator.
Book Creator is an online tool used to create student-made content in the classroom.
During our time while working on Book Creator, we typed all our chapters and learned how to add images, edit our text in front, insert headings and captions, and take pictures.
We were able to use this innovative technology to make our own books that looked like resources we used in our research. We used our visual design, our technological skills, and collaboration with our writing peers to create a very own final book.
At this time, we would like to invite you to the table so you can see the different steps in our work from this informational writing unit.
So it goes around roughly around, what's a book three inches in width?
Oh, we have to start at the beginning. The beginning's over there. But you can go in, I'm worried, like, you can go backwards, you can see the deconstruction of the project.
Yeah, you can see the final product.
Yeah, you can see the final product.
Yeah, otherwise it just sits there, you know, yeah.
I usually go Memorial Day, then I back it up to May 1st, if we're close enough with 80-degree weather, I'm going to do it. That's what Kelsey said, she's not even worrying about it, I'm old school.
Yeah, it's a great time, it's a great time for us, too.
That was such a good idea. I don't know.
Yeah, I want to thank you for having us here, and for always being so supportive in making sure that we have the resources so that we can, the teachers and the faculty and the staff can be more cutting-edge in how we approach teaching and learning. And this was really just a small example of what we're doing on a daily basis with The kids would like to give you a gift.
Aw, thank you. Oh, thank you so much, thank you so much. Oh, this is beautiful, wow, this is really nice. I know, the graphics are incredible. I love it, it's so nice.
So, I'll talk to the students first. Students, you were absolutely amazing, absolutely amazing. I am so impressed. As I was sitting here, I was saying there's no way they're second graders. So, and it's not just the writing, did you have fun with writing? That's just music and joy to me to hear you say that you learned and you had fun while doing it. I am so impressed, but not just with your writing. And I bet the parents in the back noticed this as well. The students, your children, were standing in front of a podium, talking to a roomful of adults with confidence. As the adults on the board and the administration went from student to student, the eye contact was incredible, the confidence was incredible, they had such a presence to them and were so articulate, I'm just blown away, and that's absolutely wonderful. Reading in public is not easy to do, and you stood there, you first introduced yourselves, but then you read your cards, and you did so beautifully. I am so proud of you, and that was absolutely terrific. So the writing is one thing that I'm very proud of, and I can't wait to put this book in my office, I'm so excited to add this to my library in my office. But even beyond that, boys and girls, what you did was absolutely amazing, and you really represented Brookside and you represented Yorktown really, really well tonight, I am just so proud of you. Parents, I just want to say thank you to you, you're your children's first teachers, you're their best teachers, and we certainly appreciate the partnership that we have with you. What I'll also add is, I think you joined me in just being so proud of your children, and the way they were able to address a roomful of adults, a roomful of Board of Education and administration. It's not easy to come out on a Monday night, the week's just getting started, you've got lunches to make, snacks to make, bedtime routines, bath time, and all these other demands on your time, but you made a point to be here, and we really appreciate that, and we appreciate the partnership and your support in your child's learning. We have them for six, seven hours a day, you have them every other minute after that, and they mean everything to you, and we appreciate the opportunity to educate them for the time that we do have them. So parents, thank you for your support, and certainly, I just want to acknowledge the faculty and staff in attendance here, Ms. McGarvey, Ms. DeBrino, Dr. Sandor, Mr. Cassarini, I hope I didn't leave anyone out, but thank you so much for being here, for your support, for what you do day in and day out, and just to have a glimpse into that, I think is very powerful for our community, very powerful for up here, for us up here. So I just wanted to thank you for everything that you do for our students each day, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Corbone.
Yeah, I want to say thank you, but I think, students, I think we have several board members that would like to say something to you, so we'll start with Mrs. Ruhl.
You guys are amazing, from the book themselves, the all the, I mean, I have two books on Arctic foxes, and they're both so different, you guys put your own special touch on it, which I love, to the speaking, I'm a big fan of public speaking, and you guys stood up there and didn't mince your words, went right up there and said what you had to say, and you said it with confidence, and looked at everybody, it was just great. So I want to thank you guys for sharing your books with us, and your speaking with us, and then showing us how do you use the computer, starting with the rough draft, then using your computer, and then turning it into the final book. It's such a process, and I'm so impressed and proud of you guys for doing all of that. Thanks for sharing it.
Sure.
I think this is the youngest group of authors I've ever met, and I think you all did a very nice job tonight, and really appreciate you coming out. I think the biggest thing, I'm hoping that you learned here, and at such a young age, is that you went through a process, that it probably wasn't but, you know, a couple years ago, and it was fun to color a picture, grab a picture off, you know, the computer, or to, you know, write a story, but the way you put it together, you knew that there were definitely steps in this process, and you really pulled it together, it's just such a great foundation for where you're going to go next. So beautiful job tonight, I love my book, I can't wait to put it at my house, oh, it's just so adorable. So thank you for coming out, you all did such a wonderful job tonight.
Ashley?
What a great job, I loved hearing you speak on the podium, I have to say, when I was your age, I could not do that. So, you know, really great job. I did learn an interesting fact today, one of the young students shared with me, that an Arctic fox has about 15 kits in one litter, and it made me think, I have a red fox family that lives in my yard, so I have to research now whether that'll lead to 15 of them showing up, so you got me thinking, thank you for sharing.
Maybe they can research for you. Mike?
Boys and girls, you did such a wonderful job, and thank you all for coming out, this is always the highlight of our meetings, getting to hear our young students speak so eloquently, and I was especially impressed with the questions that were, the way you answered our questions without hesitation, you guys know your facts, you knew the process, you knew how to use the software, you were able to demonstrate it, all amazing skills, and really a beautiful night, so thank you.
Catalina?
I agree, Mike, I think not only did you become experts on your animals, but also experts on the writing process, and some students even showed me how to highlight, how to make things bigger and smaller, so I think this was just more than the writing process, and you became experts on a lot of different things, great job.
Pete?
I learned more about penguins today than I've ever known, and the wonderful thing was, when I asked questions, they knew the answers right away, and there was no hesitation. The ability to speak in front of a group like this is so impressive, and in second grade, to be able to read like you do, is truly, truly amazing, so keep it up, and again, this is the best part of the board meeting, every single week, so thank you all for coming.
Yes, yeah, and I agree, good news is, is what reminds us what we do every time we come here, we do a lot of business, but when we see these children in front of us, we realize what we're doing, and why we're making the decisions we make, so thank you parents for bringing them out. Dieter?
Boys and girls, I'm so proud of you, thank you, one, for sharing these beautiful books with us, and for me to have one that I can take back to my office. I loved, I think most, more than anything, was the leads that you gave into your writing, and that was really a good hook as a reader, that I really wanted to read more, so I'm looking forward to reading the book that I have, and that you learned all of those nonfeatures, those features of nonfiction text, and I saw them, used them in all of your work. I enjoyed hearing how you took the process from writing, and how you really enjoyed the technology piece, so that it made it even faster when you wanted to edit, to change, to revise, so thank you so much for sharing all that you've learned with us, I look forward to seeing your writing, even as you get older and in your next grades, you're doing a terrific job, and we're so proud of you, thank you.
So, we're going to take a brief intermission, we have a whole meeting, you're welcome to stay, it's going to be great, I've got some updates I'm giving, but also, if you take the opportunity to depart now, to just get your evening moving forward, bedtimes, lunches, and all the other demands on your time, we'll take just a brief five-minute recess, you can leave from either door, and if you choose to leave, have a great evening, if you choose to stay, it's going to be a great remainder of the board meeting with some policies that we'll look at, and certainly discussion on some budget items, but have a great evening if you choose to leave, thank you.
Okay, so that was another of the cutest ones we've had, put a smile on your face. Okay, Yvette, we are up to public comment, the first public comment, anybody sign up? No? So we're going to move right into the superintendent's report, Ron?
Okay, I just have a very brief update for the community, no formal budget presentation this evening, but I will certainly remind the community of two things. Number one, a letter went out last week from me with some general updates, and that included a really comprehensive overview of the budget for the 2024-25 school year. All of the information is posted to our website, it's quite accessible for members of our community to review, to ask questions, if you're reviewing something and you have any questions, please reach out, an email, the community certainly has my email address, you're welcome to follow up with any questions that you have. The budget vote and trustee election is on May 21st, Tuesday, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at French Hill. If you have any questions on either voter registration, or early mail voting, or absentee ballots, I would advise you to reach out to our district clerk, Yvette Segal, her email address is y s e g a l at yorktown.org. With regard to UPK, the state budget was recently approved, I'm delighted to share with our community that we'll be continuing our pre-K program, we have 188 seats, at this point, we have 134 children enrolled. Now, we set an initial deadline of May 1st, so everyone who has registered thus far will have a seat at this point, so that, talk about a true UPK program, every member of this community who's expressed interest in being in the program will get in to the program at this point. As we take enrollments, we'll keep a rolling admission, so until we fill up our seats, the 188 seats that we have allocated, we'll continue to accept enrollment, once our enrollment reaches that 188 threshold, we'll discontinue accepting new enrollees. But just so exciting that all the families who have signed up, you'll be getting a letter from me later on this week to welcome you officially to our school district, and to welcome your child to our pre-K program. We're delighted to be able to offer it for a second year, it's been just a resounding success in year one. And then finally, the update that I'll share is, we have three upcoming board meetings that are celebratory in nature. On May 13th, Monday night, following Mother's Day weekend, we'll be celebrating those faculty and staff who are recommended for tenure in our school district, we encourage you to come out and celebrate. That meeting will be in the high school auditorium at 7:00 p.m., so it's a change in location because we anticipate a larger crowd and just a more formal venue. We also have on June 10th, our school partner recognition night, and we're looking forward to celebrating the organizations within our school community that are so supportive of our school district, day in and day out, the PTAs, SEPTA, Husker Club, the First Nighters, Alliance for Safe Kids, and so many other groups, including Aramark and some other community partners. These groups selflessly volunteer their time to support the work of teaching and learning in our school district, and it's just so great to take a night out, and I appreciate the board's willingness to do this, and joy in doing this, it's so nice to take a night out to recognize the volunteers for their service, and so we welcome you to come out to that meeting as well, that is, again, June 10th, Monday night, 7:00 p.m., also in the high school auditorium. And then finally, on June 17th, we have our board meeting celebrating our retirees and anyone celebrating a milestone anniversary in our school district. So again, another celebratory night to acknowledge people who have devoted an entire career to the children of Yorktown and to the Yorktown Central School District. That meeting, like all the three remaining meetings, are at 7:00 p.m., and they will all be held in the Yorktown High School auditorium. Come out to one, two, or all three of the remaining meetings, we look forward to celebrating some really, really special people who have contributed greatly to our district. That concludes the report that I was going to share, and I'll turn it back over to you.
Can I just ask a question, because you were mentioning UPK, this is, we're almost finishing our first year of UPK, and I know we heard about it in the beginning, but how has that program worked out through the year?
It's probably one of the been the most successful, smoothly implemented programs that I've ever been able to witness. The staff that work with the students each and every day are the most dedicated and talented staff that I've met, they are so willing to partner with us, they have partnered with our kindergarten- So until we fill up our seats, the 188 seats that we have allocated, we'll continue to accept enrollment. Once our enrollment reaches that 188 threshold, we'll discontinue accepting new enrollees. But just so exciting that all the families who have signed up, you'll be getting a letter from me later on this week to welcome you officially to our school district and to welcome your child to our pre-K program. We're delighted to be able to offer it for a second year. It's been just a resounding success in year one. And then finally, the update that I'll share is we have three upcoming board meetings that are celebratory in nature. On May 13th, Monday night, following Mother's Day weekend, we'll be celebrating those faculty and staff who are recommended for tenure in our school district. We encourage you to come out and celebrate. That meeting will be in the high school auditorium at 7:00 p.m. So it's a change in location because we anticipate a larger crowd and just a more formal venue. We also have on June 10th, our school partner recognition night. We're looking forward to celebrating the organizations within our school community that are so supportive of our school district day in and day out. The PTAs, SEPTA, Husker Club, the First Nighters, Alliance for Safe Kids, and so many other groups, including Aramark and some other community partners. These groups selflessly volunteer their time to support the work of teaching and learning in our school district. And it's just so great to take a night out. And I appreciate the board's willingness to do this and joy in doing this. It's so nice to take a night out to recognize the volunteers for their service. And so we welcome you to come out to that meeting as well. That is, again, June 10th, Monday night, 7:00 p.m., also in the high school auditorium. And then finally, on June 17th, we have our board meeting celebrating our retirees and anyone celebrating a milestone anniversary in our school district. So again, another celebratory night to acknowledge people who have devoted an entire career to the children of Yorktown and to the Yorktown Central School District. That meeting, like all the three remaining meetings, are at 7:00 p.m. and they will all be held in the Yorktown High School auditorium. Come out to one, two, or all three of the remaining meetings. We look forward to celebrating some really, really special people who have contributed greatly to our district. That concludes the report that I was going to share and I'll turn it back over to you.
Can I just ask a question? Because you were mentioning UPK. This is, we're almost finishing our first year of UPK and I know we heard about it in the beginning, but how is that program worked out through the year?
Yeah.
It's probably one of the been the most successful, smoothly implemented programs that I've ever been able to witness. The staff that work with the students each and every day are the most dedicated and talented staff that I've met. They are so willing to partner with us. They have partnered with our kindergarten faculty. They have intervisitations. They've partnered with our professional development. They love what they do. The feeling that you have the minute that you walk through those doors is of genuine support, love of learning, of children, happy students, playing, learning and playing, interacting. They are so well-prepared for kindergarten that it's just so exciting to see what it really will cause us to have to change maybe and modify to be ready to accept students that are just so ready for the classroom. We don't have the benefit of looking at our pre-K programs in the past on this, on an ongoing basis. So to be so welcomed into the program, to get inside of the classrooms, to see what's happening on a daily basis is just terrific. Our teachers are impressed. Our building administrators have also made visits. Our school psychologists have made visits. It's just been a really welcoming, wonderful program that you would swear that it was here for 10 years and not just one year. It's so well-run.
That's fantastic to hear. We put the program in. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to ask that question as well, Jackie. But also, are we, are we tracking data as they come in through kindergarten to see if the program is helping the students? I know you said that they're all ready, but in terms of their actual academics and other social skills, are we, are we able to track that over the years to see how that goes? And then also, how are we getting the word out to the community about, I mean, yeah, we say it at this meeting, but I'm not sure that families that don't have kids already in the school will watch our meeting. So how do we get the word out to other families that this is available to them?
So I'll start with the first part. Deirdre could certainly piggyback and then I'll address the second part first. With regard to spreading the notification, we're following the same template that we followed last year, which we found to be successful. But truth is, and that template is essentially our mail service, our text messaging service, our spreading the word through Yorktown News, our website. But the best, and the preschools are all aware that we're offering the program, but the best advertisement that we can do or awareness that we can do for the program is word of mouth. And so many of the families are speaking to each other and will get referrals that says, hey, we just moved into the community. We're not on your list serve yet. Can you add us? Can you give us information about the program? And so word of mouth, I would say, and social media has been, and we're posting on all of our social media platforms as well. But word of mouth has been the best help and also the digital sign out front of the high school. There are 100,000 cars that travel up and down Route 202 each day and that digital sign we've been able to leverage to spread the word, not just on pre-K enrollment, but kindergarten enrollment. And so I just want to take the opportunity, so for anybody watching this meeting, if your child is kindergarten-eligible, please enroll them as well. That is so important to us in terms of determining staffing levels and other areas of our budget because for every section that we offer, it's three sections of phys ed, it's an art section, it's a music section, it's a library section. There are implications. There's a teaching assistant in the kindergarten classrooms. There are broader implications beyond just one registration. So we would just ask not just for pre-K registration, but for kindergarten registration as well, which we do have on our digital sign as well. And we'll certainly make sure that that continues to be posted. With regard to the data, much of the data at this point would be anecdotal in nature because some of the themes that we'll hear about are the social pieces, are the ability to exercise patience and take turns and sit in a circle, on a rug or at a chair. So largely anecdotal early on, but we certainly can look at reading levels. Those conversations we've discussed briefly, but not broadly or in earnest at this point. There are multiple metrics that we can look at, whether it's a reading level, whether it's benchmark against standards. The data that we have discussed at this point is largely anecdotal because there is an experience that every kindergarten teacher, not just in Yorktown, but all across the world, experiences when children first enter a formal, a more formal school setting. And it's interesting to see if those experiences have improved or grown as a result of having a more structured and formal school district-run pre-K program. We also have our kindergarten screening. We can look at data that way to better understand kindergarten screen incoming, kindergarten student needs and where children are with regard to their development, but largely anecdotal. Deirdre, I'm not sure if there's anything to add.
Yeah, I think you covered most of the data that we do collect and we are looking forward to the screening that's coming up during the month of May. They do, they do have the programs that we do run in our K-3 programs, the Foundations and Hegarty. With those two programs specifically, we are interested in seeing what the readiness skills are for the end of pre-K as compared to the beginning of kindergarten. So there are some pieces of data that we will collect in addition to things that we've gotten. It's for the 120 students that we have in that program. So to be fair to the students that attend other programs, we just, it gives us a captive group to see how well our students are doing and to see how the program is running. But we do have, as Dr. Hatter said, the anecdotal data and the readiness skills for kindergarten is really what I think teachers are most looking forward to is the ability to attend from day one.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're going to move on to board reports. We're going to start with the audit committee, Rashmi?
Sure. So the audit committee has a meeting scheduled on the calendar for middle of June. The purpose of that meeting is to kick off the external audit portion for this year with the external auditor. And for the internal audit, Lisa and her team, they're working on the management response to the report we have. So once we have a draft of that along with the report, we'll share that. And then in terms of the same internal audit, a secondary area of review for this year that the committee identified was the review of lunch funds. So I have to reach out to the auditor and get an estimate on that, like a proposal for that. So more to come. That's about it.
Thank you. Thank you. Educational vision, Catalina?
We met on March 20th and we had some follow-ups. The high school is looking to finalize about regions and final grading at the end of May, I believe. And we also talked about how we were going to get ideas to the educational vision committee. And we talked about follow-up on agenda items from other committees because sometimes we had sent our AI over to the policy committee. So we were still just, I think, starting of how we're going to work our educational vision committee.
Thank you. Fiscal advisory, Mike?
No update at this time. Budget's complete, so we're just awaiting community acceptance.
Cheryl, policy?
Sure. We last met on April 11th. We discussed the age of attendance changing, so it affected a few of our policies. We made those adjustments. We discussed field trip policy as well as wellness policy. We actually reviewed seven policies at that meeting. Recommendations to the board, we've had a few at the last board meeting. We had some first read and adoptions based on the changes that we made. Follow-up items, we're continuing to work on the wellness policy and our next meeting is April, is May 30th.
Terrific. And then steering continues to meet every two weeks. We've had two meetings they met, the architects met with the, a few select people from the two K-3 schools to talk to them about what their needs are, what they would like and they envisioned as a classroom for the 21st century. And the architects then are starting to come up with preliminary ideas of what to do with those classrooms. They brought that back to us. Deirdre joined us for that meeting. Very helpful to understand how a classroom can function and what can go in it. We're also still on track so far for the track replacement and the turf replacement. And the architects are also working with their consultant in order to start work on the fields, the baseball field and the extra turf field. And a lot of it has to do now with developing how much water retention and the water runoff and how that's going to be retained before it goes into stormwater. So there's a lot of calculations before they can come up with some designs. But we are working with plans for how to get all of that done. Anything else? Did I miss anything? Board action items. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 15th? You okay? April 15th meeting?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? Aye opposed? You okay?
Yep.
All right. A motion to approve the treasures report for March 2024?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A motion to approve the claims audit report for March 2024?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A motion to approve the extra classroom report for March 24?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Election inspector resolved that the Board of Education of the Yorktown Central School District appoint the following individuals as election inspectors and/or alternate election inspectors for the 2024 annual school district budget vote and election to be compensated at a flat rate of $300 for the day and any additional time after 9:30 p.m. at a rate of $20 an hour. And this is for Arlene Lawrence?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so this is a motion to approve the annual organizational meeting in July and we need to have a discussion about the date. So we deliberately didn't put the date in. It has to happen within the first 15 days in July, but July 4th falls on a Thursday. So did we want to do it the Monday before, the Monday after? And I just felt that the board members should kind of weigh in as to what their calendars and their vacation schedules look like. So does anybody have any thoughts or suggestions? It would be, what are the two dates? The eighth?
Eight.
The first or the?
Could be the 15th.
The first, the eighth or the 15th? So does anybody have any suggestions? The 15th?
I was thinking the 15th, but I see in our upcoming calendar that there's two meetings in July?
Yeah, I was going to ask that.
So how are we doing that?
No, one meeting. It's an organizational meeting and there's another meeting happening at the same time.
Same day.
Yeah, yeah, it's the same meeting. Yeah.
15th makes sense to me, but.
That's fine.
Everybody good for July 15th? Everybody's looking? We don't, well, I'm trying to get away from July 4th for you guys.
15 is good for me.
I think of the three choices, July 15th is the saving.
Yep. I don't know why they make it. They always make it beginning of July when it's a problem, but okay. So can I have a motion to approve the annual organizational meeting for Monday, July 15th, 2024 at 5:30 p.m. at the Mildred East Strang Middle School Cafeteria?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all. I have a motion to approve the board meeting calendar for 2024-25 and obviously it's going to have the change of the organizational meeting date.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Personnel, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved. Under certified personnel, we have additions to the substitute list, some co-curricular and extra high school changes, unpaid leave of absence, resignation for the purpose of retirement, two additional resignations. And under classified personnel, we have in addition to the substitute list, a removal from the substitute list and a resignation.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Business office, a motion to accept the business electrification impact study proposal in the amount of $12,724 from INF Associates based in Putnam, Northern Westchester, BOSI's RFP pending receipt of insurance documents.
So moved.
Discussion, Lisa, can you talk about this a little bit, please?
So in light of the governor's mandate that buses electrify by 2030, 2035, the district is engaging in a study to determine the feasibility of our district to be able to support, to have the grid support us, to be able to install chargers in this area. So it will be helpful for us to determine what needs to be done in order to meet that mandate. And it's also something that we anticipate will be shared with the state so that they could understand what also needs to be done from their perspective.
Any, oh, sorry.
Is there any funding provided for that mandate?
Yes. So the study itself, what we decided to do was go in a consortium. The superintendents of the Putnam Northern Westchester BOSI's Consortium met to talk about the feasibility study because the mandate is coming. 2035, the entire fleet has to be electrified. By 2027, all new bus purchases have to be electric with the anticipation that from 2027 to 2035, as buses phase out and age out, they'll be electric. So the group of superintendents through BOSI's put out an RFP. We selected a company that is about $12,000 out of pocket. However, the actual cost is about $50,000 and districts have different subsidies. According to the state, there are different subsidies for each district. So for Yorktown, it was about a 75% subsidy. It was either fully funded or it was a 75% subsidy. So we qualified for a 75% discount of the fee. The actual feasibility study, and this is quite in-depth and we're looking forward to the report, will let us know, does the town of Yorktown, specifically where our bus depot is, but certainly the town of Yorktown and surrounding, do we have the capacity in the grid to charge 71 buses each night? And that's a very real question that we're going to have to answer as a community in order to move forward with this. And then based on the outcome of that study, we'll understand either what our position is, whether there are shortcomings that we have to prepare for, whether they're within our scope of influence or outside of the scope of influence. We at least are equipped with a study that will let us know what next steps are and what the shortcomings are. So yes, there is some funding that's available. That's through a NYSERTA subsidy. And just speaking of NYSERTA, I just want to thank Mr. Fiore, Anthony Fiore, who is a parent in our community. And at Crumpon, Ms. Shyland and Ms. Reynolds actually took this mandate as a learning opportunity and they taught the children about electric buses and not only from a sustainability piece, but from an emission standpoint, an efficiency standpoint. And we actually took a bus ride on Friday. I rode in an electric bus with several students and you couldn't hear the engine start. There were no emissions that were given off and at least none that I could identify. And the power of the bus, we took it up a hill intentionally. We took the, it was actually a van that we used, but we went up a hill. I was quite impressed. We did talk about still the reality of where electric buses are today. They're making great progress each day, but there are shortcomings today. So come 2027, come 2035, I anticipate that we'll be in a better place. But the learning opportunity at Crumpon was one that I commend Ms. Reynolds and Ms. Shyland for taking that initiative. But yes, there is funding, just to go back to the original question, there is some funding. We qualify for 75% of the funding. So we could have, there was another provider on the RFP that had a lower cost attached to it, but my understanding is the quality of their report left a lot more questions than answers and left a lot to be desired. So we wanted the best possible, most comprehensive study that we could get and we found that this provider, just based on the experience that other districts have had, this provider does produce a better report.
Rashmi? My question was on the timing, like are we one of the first districts in the area or is everyone doing that?
We're, we're early, but we're all within a few weeks of each other for the most part. Most school districts are in this region. My understanding is the study is six to eight months of study before we get the report. So I'm hoping that it's more on the six-month side than the eight-month side, but I do recognize, Rashmi, your point is a lot of districts are going out for this feasibility study at the same time and there's only so much capacity that the provider has.
Yeah, but there might be some synergies and knowledge from other districts.
Yes, absolutely. There's not a meeting that goes by that the group of Putnam Northern Westchester, again, a small group, but we do communicate with a larger group of superintendents as well, where we do exchange notes and talk about the economies of scale and some of the efficiencies that we can realize and some of the commonalities across our communities. And maybe there can be some kind of partnership or synergistic relationship that we can establish to make this come to fruition more seamlessly, whether it's from a cost perspective in our respective contracts, because we all have different structures. Some districts own their own fleet and the subsidies go directly to the district. Other districts contract for busing and the subsidy would go to the provider. The work that I've been doing with some of our legislators is that any subsidy that goes to the contractor should be passed directly onto the school district, that the third-party company should not profit from the subsidies. Those savings should be returned to the taxpayer in the form of a lower bill in transportation. So that's gaining some traction. Everybody who hears it seems to think it makes sense that the district should realize the savings and in turn the taxpayer should realize the savings. So more to come in that regard.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you. Anybody else? Mike?
Yeah. You mentioned the study being focused on the local resources and the grid and the availability of charging and all of that. Is there anything in the study about the buses themselves, what we need, how they, how they'll work, you know?
I do not believe that's within the scope of this study. It's more-
So, this is strictly electric?
Yeah. It's more, do we have the bandwidth to be able to handle the charging? And they'll also talk about the types of chargers that you have for the buses, because there are the more rapid chargers that draw more. There are the slower chargers that take longer but don't draw as much power. So, we'll get some information from a charging standpoint. But with regard to the actual vehicle or the fleet of vehicles, I don't believe this study will give us any insight into that.
But there's an, is there another study? I think Lisa answered that in the last meeting. There was another?
Yes. There's another study, not specific to electric buses, but looking at the efficiency of our transportation operations, our routing system, our stops, the duration of bus rides. So, we do, we have commissioned TAS to conduct that study. We're just awaiting their report. But that study, the information has been gathered. It's been analyzed. At this point, we believe they're in report writing mode. So, once we have that, obviously, we'll share that with the board for your review.
Anybody else? Nope. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? You didn't have a motion in a second?
Yeah. Second was Cheryl.
A motion to approve the transportation agreement with Red Oak Worldwide for the 23-24 school year?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? A motion to approve the finance manager renewal pricing for the 24-25 school year in the amount of $35,287 pending receipt of insurance documents?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? A motion to approve the following Yorktown High School overnight field trip to the Genius Olympiad Competition in Rochester on June 10th to the 14th?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? A motion to approve the agreement with Island Current for the Crumpon Elementary School Boat Excursions on June 5th, 6th, and 7th pursuant to the terms in the attached contract?
So moved.
Discussion. This is the old Klondike excursion, just a new name? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Northwell Health, a motion to approve the master educational affiliation agreement for clinical and/or non-clinical education and training programs for the students designated by the district with Northwell Health, Inc., effective May 1st, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Curriculum instruction, a motion to approve the following Yorktown Association of Insultators and Supervisors Improvement Program Proposal below?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? And a motion to approve the following Yorktown Congress of Teachers Professional Improvement Program Proposals listed below for the 23-24 school year and then additional ones for the 24-25 school year?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Special Ed, a motion to arrange the placements as of April 29, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? A settlement and release, be it resolved that the board hereby approves a settlement and release agreement dated April 4, 2024 in the matter of a student with a disability and further resolved that superintendent of schools shall be authorized to sign such settlement agreement in the, on the district's behalf?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Be it resolved that the board hereby authorizes and improves, approves the commencement of an impartial hearing in the matter of a student with a disability, student number 5507, and approves a due process complaint dated April 29, 2024 in accordance with the regulations of the Commissioner at 8 NYCRR 201.8, a copy of which shall be incorporated by reference in the minutes of this meeting. And be it further resolved that the board hereby directs the attorneys Shaw Pearlson, May, and Lambert LLP to promptly serve such due process complaint on the parents of student number 5507 in accordance with the relevant law regulation in terms of the retainer agreement by and between the law firm and the district.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Gifts, grants, and donations, a motion to accept with gratitude the following gifts, grants, and donations at Mohansick 1600 for the third-grade excursion to the Wolf Conservation Center from the Mohansick PTA, $1,000 for the second-grade excursion to the Yorktown Stage from the Mohansick PTA, $5,000 for a Glowforge printer from the Mohansick PTA, at Crumpon, $2,000 for the fifth-grade excursion to the Island Current Charter on June 5th, 6th, and 7th from the Crumpon PTA, and New Yorktown High School catering for the Science Research Symposium from the Science Research Parent Foundation.
So moved. Second.
Second. Discussion.
Go ahead.
What is a Glowforge printer? And why do we need one at Mohansick, if you don't mind?
So, yeah, you can speak to it, but I'm happy to.
A Glowforge is a 3D printer. We have some 3D printers in the buildings right now. The difference with the Glowforge is that it uses a lot of different mediums. So, students can cut on cardboard, on plastic, on sheets of metal. It can burnish into wood, different types of particle board. And it's really fast. So, right now, a 3D printer that we have, it's a pretty slow process of where you're taking some of the plastic materials and building. And one item might take hours to complete. Whereas with the Glowforge, an entire class can be engaged because the, whatever they're designing on the computer can be created in a matter of seconds on a Glowforge. This building, the middle school, has had a Glowforge. This is its third year, and it's really enhanced the program greatly. So, we're looking forward to having our younger students be able to learn and design and build and continue a lot of that eSteam learning using this type of a printer.
It gives, it takes our work to the next level, is essentially where we are. 3D printing is limited. The Glowforge allows us to just kind of take the good work that we've been doing to the next level. It gives us more versatility in terms of what we can design, what we can design on, and more intricacy to the work that we do. So, as students come up with more creative solutions to problems that the real world is facing, because that's really the premise of eSteam, the tools that we have right now all have limitations. So, Glowforge is another more advanced tool that we can have in our toolbox for students.
I have a question. Is the middle school Glowforge, is that what the technology department used to create those food trucks for the?
Part of, yes. So, part of those food trucks, not the truck itself, but there were components of the food truck that were etched that were created using the Glowforge.
And that was for the food truck event?
Yes. The competition that we had, yes.
And this is appropriate for?
They're not doing this without supervision. There's plenty of supervision.
I mean, we're cutting metal and everything else in second and third grade?
Were you watching these second graders make books today?
I was. And I wouldn't want any of them near anything that would cut.
No, we do. Honestly, what I think might be neat is, as we use the Glowforge, I'd love to invite you in to take a look at it, because it is really, really cool to see the children using the Glowforge.
I'm sure it's great.
And totally, it's safe. It's-
And we have, I heard we have one at the middle school. We have one at Crumpon?
We, we're looking to get them in all of our elementary schools.
Okay. Next question then. So, we have a printer. Now, what's the budgetary impact for all the supplies and everything else? And how have we factored that in?
It's going to depend on use, and it's something that we would have to absorb within our operating budget. It's not going to be something that's used outside of the scope of a project that we're working on. So, it's obvious to conclude, or maybe not obvious to conclude, at least I'm concluding this, that you're replacing something. So, if you're not using spools of 3D printer plastic, you're replacing that by using the Glowforge printing medium. So, yes, I'm sure there will be a cost that's associated with this. Absolutely there will be. But I would like to think, and it's something that we'll certainly discuss further, there's, it's replacing something, not in addition to, it may be in lieu of using a 3D printer or some other medium.
And just to be clear, I'm not against-
I think Lisa just wants to see what they bring us to show us.
No, this is just-
We get good stuff when they make it.
Normally, these are things we purchase within our budget, right? And so, this is sort of an unusual way to obtain one of these items. And so, it raises some questions about, you know, why do we have to go this route?
I think there was some interest, and it's something that we're certainly moving toward. And Deirdre's welcome to, I can't see behind you because I'm looking this way. And I have to do a better job of looking at the side of the table opposed to that side of the table. But it's something that, once you see the power of what a Glowforge can do, it's quite exciting. And I think it's something that the PTAs became interested in supporting because they see the possibilities that it can bring to our elementary schools. And I don't want to say we're at the cutting edge of having Glowforges with kindergarten students.
On intended.
Literally, yeah. But it is not a technology that you see widespread yet. It's growing in popularity. I think people are graduating from 3D printers and looking at what's next. Certainly at the high school, at the middle school level, that we've had it for years. But now at this level, K-3, it's an exciting addition, and it is the next step. We had 3D printers. We went to 3D pens. Those were limited. They served a purpose, but they were limited. The Glowforge gives us a whole nother level of versatility and another dimension for us to aspire to.
Yeah. I just wanted to add, I think we've always taken pride in technology and being at that, you know, forefront of things. So, when 3D printers were new, our middle school students and of course, high school students had 3D printers. And this is really the next generation of that. Probably in the elementary school, they're not going to be printing off of metal. It might be more cardboard and, you know, spools of plastic kind of stuff. And, you know, in the high school, sure, it might be more, you know, rougher materials. But it's really cool. So.
I agree. I agree with Rashmi. We're always in the forefront. We're the trend setters. We're the leaders. And this is just another step to move our students forward, our youngest students forward. And we're very grateful to the Mohansick PTA for putting together this gift.
You guys good? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? All right. I just had it, but we're going to go to board comments. Pete, I'll start over with you.
Nothing more than I can say than I already have. Another good night.
Catalina?
A great night. And I wonder what the kids would have done with the Glowforge? With the Arctic foxes?
Exactly. Mike?
Yes. It was a very enjoyable evening. Thank you. And I think I've said enough. So, I'll stop.
Rashmi?
Yes. Great evening. I had a question on the proposed calendar of meetings for next year. So, I see that for March, we have three meetings. We only have one for Feb., three for March, and really two for April. Is that sufficient time, Dr. Hatter, for all the series of budget presentations? Because I think this year, we, there were a couple of evenings, yeah, that were very dense.
And that's a great point. And that's something we were cognizant of in developing the calendar. I do believe part of what resulted, the circumstances that resulted in some of those long meetings and unusually long meetings is the consolidation of the process to bifurcate it from our bond and to keep the conversation separate. So, with the bond vote being in February, we would have, and we will begin the process a little earlier without a bond vote next year. So, we're going to try to avoid having those larger presentations lumped together moving forward. And I do believe that the meeting schedule will give us that flexibility.
Okay. Great. Yeah. Perfect.
You know, maybe, maybe it would be helpful if we could share the presentation, like, what you think is going to go on which day, so the board can maybe weigh in if they think that that was too many in one, some of those categories were really-
We can certainly give you a draft.
Yeah.
We typically, and we can do that soon. We can have that out.
Just what you think, what items?
Right. Just the topic. What topic are we going to do?
Exactly.
So, I don't want to, yeah, we can absolutely do that. What I don't want to do is go too premature on the budget development calendar.
No, 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 no.
But we can give you a column certainly in the Board of Education meeting to let you know which presentations we're planning for that night, so that you have that in advance. But it'll be different from the board budget calendar.
Oh, no, no. I wasn't thinking, I was just thinking, so we could see what you're planning because maybe that's too much in one night. Maybe we do want an extra meeting in there. I think the board maybe, maybe it could be a discussion item at the next meeting in case we want to add another meeting in there.
Yeah. So, we'll have that, I mean, we can put that together tomorrow. We'll sit down. So, we'll sit down tomorrow.
I got to tell you, because we're all getting old, and we can't make decisions after 9:00 at night.
Yeah. That's a very fair and easy request to accommodate. We'll have that to you tomorrow.
Especially because sometimes we start executive session at 5:00.
Yeah.
Of course. Absolutely. Of course. We could certainly do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Cheryl?
Just thank you to Brookside for coming out tonight. Everyone did a tremendous job. And looking forward to the next three meetings. They're all celebratory meetings. We hope you can come out. We typically have a nice crowd there, but please join us because they're the nights that we really celebrate our district and everyone who makes it so special.
Lisa?
Yeah. So, I agree with Catalina. I think we would have had Penguins and Arctic Foxes here if they had had the Glowforge in advance. So, I'm really excited about that. I can't wait to see what they do with it. But it was a great night, as usual. I love the good news.
I love the good news. You know what? I looked at the number of parents that came out tonight. Whole families came out tonight. And that was really, really nice to see. It wasn't just one parent. They brought everybody. And, you know, we have such a special community, and we're really lucky to have parents that are so supportive of their kids. And they do come out at night, even for the little ones. So, we want to thank all our parents too. I know that, Ron, there's a lot of stuff going on because we're getting towards the end of the year. So, there's a lot of events. There's all kinds of sports. There's going to start being concerts and other events. So, how do we keep people up to date as to what they can go see?
Yeah. So, we have a newsletter that comes out every month. And it's the calendar that is right at the front page. As soon as you open our newsletter, all of those important dates are listed there. The athletic calendar, we don't include in our monthly newsletter because with weather and some other circumstances, those dates can change. So, the newsletter will certainly, and I believe that's coming out this week. Yeah, it's coming out this week, I believe. I'm pretty sure. So, we have our newsletter coming out this week. And then we have the athletic calendar posted to our website. So, any families, and we're seeing so many families come out to athletic events, irrespective of whether they have children in the high school. We have many families coming out. So, it's in two places. It's in our newsletter, the list of dates, and then we have our athletic calendar posted to the website.
Terrific. Okay.
And on our district calendar as well. Anybody can go onto our website, go to the district calendar, and you can see all the events that are coming up as well.
Okay. Anybody else? Have anything to add? We'll go on to public comment. Anybody sign up? Nope. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.